I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For emergency issues only, is there any school committee members additions to the agenda? Nope. Any public comment regarding items on the agenda? Chris?
Nobody here.
Nobody's here, except Chris. Chris is in form.
And Ruby.
Oh, no special words, no BHS rap. Moving along to our consent items, is there a consent item that folks want to pull off? Alright, hearing none, is there any discussion about the consent items?
Motion to approve the consent items?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Heather, I just want to bring your attention to it says payroll none.
Yes.
And I feel like there was one, so next time we have to do two.
It's the payroll warrant that's in there, there's no accounts payable warrants.
Oh, so this says there's an accounts payable warrant, but no payroll?
Right, and it's so there's no accounts payable, but there's a payroll warrant, it's just the numbers have been counted one.
Okay, so we'll make that adjustment. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So it passes unanimously. Competency determination, discussion or action?
Okay, give me one sec. Uh, I just want to pass these along, they have to be signed too.
Yep.
Um, I don't know if you want to present as well, I don't know if anybody's in line.
There's not.
There's not, okay, so in your packet or in the drive, you'll see a little presentation regarding the competency determination and Ms. Vino's here for this as well. So I want to thank Ms. Vino, Ben Admison, our data administrator, Maggie Foley, the department chair for guidance, Dr. Fort, and if we all met, this is regarding the MCAS and testing.
Thanks. Oh, sorry.
So, as you know, um, that when we had the election, um, there's new language in this statute regarding MCAS. And prior to this, in this, the competency determination, it was determined as measured by the assessment instruments described in section one, and that was MCAS. So because MCAS is no longer, um, a competency determination, we had to come up with our own. So the new language says that describes, and the second slide there, I don't know if you want me to read it for you word for word, but it says that the competency determina- determination shall be based on the academic standards and curriculum frameworks for 10th graders in the areas of mathematics, mathematics, science and technology, history and social science, foreign language and English, and shall represent a determina- determina- determination that a particular student has demonstrated mastery of a co- of common core skills, competencies and knowledge in these areas. And the new language is by satisfactorily completing coursework that has been certified by the students' district as showing mastery of the skills, competencies, and knowledge contained in the state academic standards and curriculum frameworks in the areas measured by the MCAS. So, as you go back to what I read earlier, it's really only in English, math, and the science. They didn't get to the history of social sciences yet, so that doesn't come into effect. So the only thing that we need to make sure is in 10th grade, that students pass, um, English. Right now, it's the bi- biology, science, and it's Algebra I in geometry. So, we had to come up as a district to say, how are we going to do that in Belcher Town? How are we going to come up with the competency determination? So, on the third slide, and this is how we're going to do it in Belcher Town. Students can meet this requirement in two ways. Before January 4th, 2025, if they earned a passing score on the MCAS, then they're good. Or, passing grade work, or class work, that has been certified by the district as showing mastery of skills, competencies, and knowledge contained in the 10th grade academic standards and frameworks. So, that means for Belcher Town, you have to have a passing grade in English 10, Algebra 1, or 2, and geometry, and biology. Now, we also-
In 10th grade.
In 10th grade. So, Algebra 1 or 2, and I'll divert to Chris, some of these are taken in 9th grade, and then 10th grade, so the math is both 9 and 10. But it's the 10th grade, because the test was Algebra, geometry, type thing. So that's requirements for Belcher Town. You have to pass that. So, um, if you look at the next, um, page-
Well, I don't have every other page.
You don't?
I know it's two-sided, no.
Oh, here, sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
Are yours two-sided? No.
Put it on the screen and put it real big.
Sorry about that.
I'm like, I can't do that.
So-
I mean, I can put mine out.
When we-
Share with them, because I'll share with them.
So, there's two things. So, you have to meet the competency determination and graduation requirements. So, after January 4th there.
Thank you.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, that's great, thanks.
Um, you had to have a passing score. We talked about this, we looked at other districts. So, our, um, classes are aligned to the framework. So, if you get a passing grade in English 10, math, biology, then you meet the competency determination. Okay? Um, so that's for that. But then, in Belcher Town, you must also meet the graduation requirements. So, four years of English, three years of social science, four years of math, three years of science, two years of world language, one year of arts, and six credits total for wellness. So, back before our, most of our times here on this board, um, they voted that we were going to do Mass Core at the high school. So that's already in place, so that really helped us in meeting the competence determination. On the next page, slide, um, it just gives some background of the Mass Course, Mass Core, Mass Core frameworks, uh, and what it is, so we have that information there. And then, we just wanted to show you that on the last, um, slide there about the college admissions. So we have the subject, we have BHS graduation requirements, which is the four years, four years, three year. And then we have Mass State University requirements, and then Mass Core requirements. So we're definitely in line in having those high expectations. Now, you can meet graduation requirements and not meet competency determination. You can meet competency determination and not meet graduations. You have to have both to soar off into the, um-
To leave the nest.
To leave the nest. So, you got, we got to make sure that that happens.
So if you don't have both, do you get a certificate of attendance instead of a diploma?
So, some individuals will still be on, um, track not to graduate, so they would get that certificate of attendance.
Okay. So, if a, like typically enrolled student doesn't get this, like let's say in 10th grade, they fail algebra, or geometry, whichever one is 10th grade, right? Can they try again in 11th grade, or are they just out of luck?
Yes, they would be able to take that course in 11th grade.
So would their schedule allow them to take enough math?
That's an excellent question, we've had this conversation, it would. We're also looking at opportunities for when they may take the course outside of school, for summer school.
So, like, would us taking it in summer school count?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and just while Ms. Vino's here, I mean, the majority of our students do meet the graduation and competency determination when it was MCAS. So we believe we're going to continue to have that. But it's also for those students that, um, are, um, on track to be in school till age 22, or be educated, you can't really push them through. There's still that kind of, you know, obligation to do that. But what I did skip over, and I just wanted to let you know, is on the Mass Core frameworks, um, eighty-nine percent of all students in Belcher Town complete Mass Core program of studies. In 2019, it was twenty-seven point nine percent. So the high school has really done a nice job of increasing, um, expectations at the high school. Um, we brought this to curriculum instruction, it does have to be voted on, because once it's voted on, then we have to change a few policies, um, in the handbook at, um, BHS.
Is there any other questions from the committee?
Do I have to make a motion?
Let me ask one question. So a student that's, um, on track to stay, being educated until they're 22 or 23, or whatever it was, right? So at, like, 18 or 19, they get a certificate of attendance?
Yes.
Could they potentially meet this when they were 21 or 22?
Sure.
Okay.
And we do have a student that will be able to come back to Belcher Town once this is passed. And, um, if Chris and her team decide that she had the passing, um, grades that showed mastery of state, um, standards, she will graduate.
How far back does this go? Like, could somebody from the 60s challenge it?
I would only say it goes back to when MCAS-
It'll go back to when MCAS is, and so, and again, I think, I know, Mr. Cameron just brought this up. It is, it has been, in my, my time, twenty, whatever is there, twenty seven years there, our students have met the MCAS requirement. This one student that we're talking about right now unfortunately did not, just last year. But probably, yes, I don't, I can't even think of anyone that is going to come back because they've all passed the MCAS.
That's okay.
But this one more recent student will be able to come back once, if you prove this, then we will look back-
That's so great.
Make sure, make sure that, um, she meets the requirements, and then we will be in touch.
Alright.
Yeah, it is great, it's, it's a good thing.
Yeah. Alright, would that make a, you can make a motion.
Alright, so, a motion to, it's a motion to approve the competency determination, because our graduation requirements are already placed.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So it's unanimous.
So, if you could look in your packet or in the drive, there is a credit requirement for graduation.
I don't think there is, maybe it's in the drive?
Right there.
Oh, I see.
And you should also attach to it, should be a competency determination in red. So because of, um, what we just talked about, um, in Chris's handbook, you can see MCAS, that you have to have the pass, we're going to strike that out, and underneath, we have to strike out the MCAS, okay, to update the graduation requirements. And then, we're going to add in to the handbook, the new section in red about competency determination. So we would need a motion to adapt, um, or update Chris's handbook based on the graduation and competency determination changes.
Motion to, um, update the high school handbook to include the new competency determination and graduation requirements.
Second.
Second, by Ruby, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
There we go. That was less painless than I expected.
Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped to C on the agenda, new business, sorry.
That was C, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I didn't give you permission to-
No, you didn't, I, I'm sorry.
That's why the things were out of order.
Well, they go together.
I'll never do it again, I'm sorry.
Uh, fiscal 26, budget.
So, just so you know, we've been working on the update to the budget, we were given a number of 2.4 million. Um, we did get a revisement from Jill Panto regarding the reimbursement from the feasibility study from MSBA. Um, so, that gave us some additional funding. And then, there was a change when we got the governor's budget update, we got some additional money. So, um, the target, um, is about 2.1 million, um, that we have to hit. We have been working, Sean and I have been working with the administrative team. On top of the 2.1 million, we also have to factor in unemployment, um, so we are going to have to talk about that as well. We are, um, putting, um, things in place. What I need to know from the committee is, um, so, this is going to be some, um, devastating cuts to the school department and the schools. How do we want to present this information? How do you want me to present the information to you? Meaning, we usually wait till March for the public hearing. I don't know if we want to wait until March, until, like, we normally do, the, the, the presentation that I do for the school committee. Um, I don't know if you would like a, um, earlier version with just, um, kind of the preliminary without identifying positions. So I'm looking for some guidance, because I think, um, I think one of the other things that I need some direction from is, there is a possibility with, with making these drastic cuts, um, that we could realign the grades in Belcher Town, um, and possibly, um, close Cold Spring School.
Well, that's exactly what-
I have not researched, um, what that entails, I don't know if you'd like me to research with the state on how many days notice we need to give, what we need to give. But, um, that would save some money, um, but I just need some direction.
I mean, I think the sooner, considering how drastic it's going to be, I think the sooner you know anything, the better. That's my opinion. Um, if that is something that is being considered in terms of closing Cold Spring, I think we need to probably have that discussion early.
Right.
It's going to be pretty-
And I think, like, morale amongst everybody, parents, teachers, like, everybody is so low right now, because everybody is fully aware of how devastating this is going to be. And I know we can't say, like, teacher ABC is going to lose their job, because, you know, we don't know until these final numbers come in, but to at least have an idea, you know?
Yeah, I, I would just hope that I could keep some names confidential until-
I think that you should.
We go on, because, I'll give you an example today. Every week, Sean and I meet at the end of the week, and we look at retirements. We just got a retirement today, so that means that everything's going to change. So I'd hate to panic someone, and then re, you know, set, you know, so, but I, we could start talking and give you, um, you know.
Are there, like, different scenarios? Like, you know, like scenario A, we might, you know, hear, no.
So, no. We are at 1.9 million dollars, we have to get to 2.1 plus. We haven't been able to give you scenario A, B, and C.
Okay.
Because we haven't even been able to go to one scenario.
I mean, I guess if they could give us, well, maybe 2.1, or maybe 1.6, or maybe 1.4, we could get scenarios, but I feel like it's going to be worst case.
I mean, I want to be clear too, we've been through this again, we're not getting much more money.
No, I don't think that we can even, I don't think we can ta- have this conversation with any thought of like, oh, maybe they're going to give us more.
Right, right.
No, they won't.
But I, I do think that given how drastic it is, and the kinds of things we're talking about, that there may be some difficult conversations that need to happen that, that may say scenario A, scenario B. I don't know.
Yeah, I, and I, I appreciate what you're saying too, and I think in the past, we were able to do that. We're struggling.
Yeah, no, I'm sure.
And, um, we only have one scenario so far.
Right.
And if, for some reason, you know, you all say we don't like that, I don't know what we would do. What, you know, go back to, um, a different scenario.
It's a struggle, because, like, right now, it's just like, what's required and what's optional? And, like, that's, it's not like we can pick these two optional things and keep the third, like-
And I want to be clear that the, the impact of these cuts is basically allowing this situation for us to close a school. Meaning that, we can't close a school right now, in my opinion, because we don't have the room. But after these layoffs, we may have the room, so we can make that change. So, you know, you, I just don't, I want to be clear that if, you know, we close Cold Springs, let's just say, we can only do it if we reduce-
Instead of eight sections.
You know what I'm saying?
No.
So, but I think presenting to you kind of vaguely would give you guys the sense, and then, it might be easier to ask, you know, about scenarios. You know?
Okay.
So I will, I will do that, and we will continue to work on that, and-
But I do think, I mean, if that is really something that's on the table, I, I think the community needs to know that sooner rather than later.
Right. Um, yeah, I mean, it's, I, I think everything's on the table, um, but I feel like it's going to happen at the 11th hour.
Yeah.
You know, which I think is crazy, because, you know, March, April is when we-
I know.
You know? So, but, yes, I, I, I hear you, and, cool.
Yeah, I think-
And I think too, sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I just want to say too, that Ruby and I met with, um, Steve Williams and some, um-
Nicole and Whitney.
Whitney from the select board about Javish, because, you know, what we're going to do in Javish. And, um, I think we need to have a conversation about that as a committee too, because I'm sure that you have a lot of say on what happens with Javish. And if we're realigning Javish, and, you know, we realign the grades, I don't know where others, others may not like that, I guess, and want to do something different, so I need some directions. I know everybody's talking about a 7 or 12, you know, um, whatever. But what if we end up switching, you know, bringing 6th grade to Javish, and we have a 6, 7, and 8, you know? But what is the projection, or where this committee wants to go with that?
I mean, I feel like if we get these kind of cuts next year, that may require Javish to close too. Like, if this kind of cuts gets Cold Springs closed this year, I don't know.
And I certainly don't want to say that Cold Springs is closing definitely.
Yeah, 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 I get what you're saying.
I think it's just an, an option.
Do you have a feeling on that, Javish, in that meeting?
No, I mean, we, it was really just to, so, we had had a meeting over the summer that was not very productive. I mean, feelings were still pretty raw, and it was just, the tone of the meeting was not productive. And so, you know, Steve had said, like, can we try and have another meeting? And so, this time, it was Nicole and Whitney. It was mostly just to, like, restart the conversation, but we're in a different place now with 2.1 million in cuts on the table versus when we spoke over the summer. So the tone of that, you know, the, it was a different conversation, so, yeah.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Um, CBC grant.
So, in your folder, you will see a proposal for the Community Preservation Committee. Um, they're having a meeting tonight at 7, so, um, we're going to end early, so we can attend that meeting uptown at town hall. So, um, we were invited to attend the meeting a couple of weeks ago. The, we submitted a grant for the, um, fields of the high school. A number of parents reached out to me, Ms. Vino, myself, um, Ruby, we all met, kind of come up with some solutions about the fields. Families felt they were unsafe, what could we do, how could we work together as a community? So I came up about submitting a proposal to the Community Preservation Committee. Uh, we did that, then we amended it to have a well. Out of the conversation with the parents and the town was there, I think two major, um, kind of issues arose for me at least. Um, and those were that we don't have enough water to maintain the fields at the high school, and those are, um, really, um, leading to some poor field conditions. And, um, there was some conversation, I don't even know why it came to be, who made the decision, or whatever, it's just there, that we couldn't use any pesticides or herbicides on the field. My understanding is that we really need that to maintain those fields. We have a plan in place that says we can use them. So we kind of learned that from that meeting, and which I thought was very helpful. So Heidi and I and Eric attended the CBC committee, um, they got our proposal, they asked some questions, and they wanted me to guarantee that the school district could come up with 30,000 a year to maintain the fields. Um, I said, I can't really guarantee anything, there's no guarantees in life. What I can tell you is that parents came together, they want to help with this initiative, fundraising, this and that, and they said that wasn't good enough, because it's not really solid money. Um, fundraising is, yeah, kind of what if? So, they did ask for a proposal on how we would maintain the field. So, I ended up putting something together, which, if we get the well through this grant, um, and the grant is almost 200,000 for the well and repair of the stadium field, we would save about $10,000 per year in water. Um, so that 10,000 could go into maintaining the fields. The other was Eric was gracious to give $10,000 of his maintenance budget for the fields. So that would be the 25, the 20,000. Then, I talked to BOA and some other individuals who we were looking to do some fundraising, and to establish possibility, like, advertisement of businesses on the fences, bring in some revenue to help support the field. In order to, um, bring down, um, the unknown about the fundraising, I said that, um, we could use $10,000 from School Choice to make the pot of 30,000. So we got 10 from the water savings, 10 from Eric, and 10 from School Choice. Once we did the fundraising activities and worked with BOA, we could use those funds to replace School Choice. But that way, hopefully, the board for the Community Preservation Committee would feel better that there's $10,000 coming from School Choice, which is a solid, like, it will be there no matter what. So, I sent this over there a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago, I have not heard back from them. Um, I did come across the agenda for the meeting tonight, and there's a topic on there about parents showing up to support this project. And, somebody spoke to BOA, who was on board, uh, um, helping the school district come up with the funds, so we can maintain the fields. They just didn't want to put all this money into this project, and there was no commitment from the schools. I heard it loud and clear. I think for myself and Eric, when we were writing the grant, we wanted to be transparent that that was, this was a community effort. Parents came on board, they wanted to be part of the process, but people didn't feel comfortable with the unknown of how much money would be raised, so, hence this proposal.
So Brian's being very gracious, they don't have a really high opinion of the schools. Um, I don't know how it's going to come tonight, I don't know if they're going to see this and be okay with it, or they're going to see this and be like, no, I don't want to help you. Um, at the end of the day, like, we have a lot of families really into athletics in Belcher Town. Um, and that's going to be helped by this, and the school, we can't put up this money right now. We don't have this money to put up. Um, so I don't want to say, sorry, I don't care about sports, but I, like, we're dealing with quite enough. So, the meeting tonight, I don't know if you're planning to go, I, I think it could go either way. I hope that they can help us, because there'll be a lot of families and a lot of children who really benefit from that. And I think the school can do their part to make sure they don't invest this money and it just goes to waste, so.
Yeah, and I guess I just want to say that I, I know it's only $10,000, but I did really struggle, even with that, looking at 2.1 million in cuts that even $10,000 to put toward this. But, you know, I recognize it is an opportunity to put in that amount of money. Hopefully, we get it back through the fundraising, and that, you know, we can reap the benefits of getting a new field. of getting a new field and a system to maintain it and all of that. But I did just wanna acknowledge that, you know, I, even that small amount of money, to me, facing down the big cuts, felt I wasn't a hundred percent on board, but I am, you know, I recognize the opportunity, so.
I agree with that. All right, um, we don't need any action, right?
Nope.
Okay, it just doesn't action. Um, Belcher Town move study.
I sent you a couple of emails earlier in this calendar year, and so I just wanted to give an opportunity if there was any questions. We are giving a survey to every student who opts to participate, or whose family opts them in to participate, or if family doesn't opt them out of participation. Uh, it was developed in partnership with University of Massachusetts Kinesiology Lab. They are going to use the data to help us, um, guide the creation of an updated either wellness policy, um, comprehensive physical activity plan, or both. Um, and we just have to hand out the survey. And then the other thing it does is opens a, a pretty important relationship with that group, and they've got all sorts of big plans for things they wanna come in and do with us, so.
Do we know how many students opted in or out yet?
Not, not yet. Uh, I've only gotten a couple, um, so once, we don't have an exact schedule for when the students will do it. It'll be early next month. All the faculty had an opportunity to take the survey, their version of the survey today, uh, at one of the meetings, and then it's going out again tomorrow morning for anyone who didn't get a chance to, so we'll have our staff input as well. Um, and then really opting out just ensures that, um, the students don't take the survey that day. And, and if they do inadvertently, I'll have that list, so that I just won't share any of that data with UMass. But once they opt out, they really shouldn't, and shouldn't even get it. It's all digital, so it's, it's easy.
Perfect. Any questions?
No, I think it's great that we're partnering with this lab, and, um, I know she's a parent in the district, so, yeah.
I feel like that's gonna be fun.
It's cool. There's, there's some, there's cool stuff happening. Um, Christine St. Laurent has also, um, volunteered for something to come and talk about some of the other things that they, that they're hoping to do. Um, so we'll, we'll certainly invite her as we, as we get this moving.
Perfect. All right, up next, we have Belcher Gertown Integrated Monitoring Review.
So every three years, six years, we have a audit, basically. Um, and it's with special education, um, civil rights, ELL, Title I, Title II, Title II-A. It's different times throughout the year. So, um, Becky was going to be here, but she had a little accident skiing and broke her ankle.
Oh, no.
So she apologizes that she can't be here in two places. Um, so I'm representing Becky, um, tonight. Um, so what happens here is, um, I just wanna bring you through the process. So, and this is through the Department of Ed, and we participate in this integrated monitoring review um, by the Department of Ed. It's through the Office of Public School Monitoring. Every school district has to go through this.
Is this a national thing or a Massachusetts thing?
Um, I'm, it's Massachusetts, but I'm sure other.
There's an iteration.
Just curious how it's gonna continue.
Um, so basically, they're just monitoring to make sure that we are in compliance with special education, civil rights. Um, the, the one, this one is totally focusing on civil rights and special education. So basically, um, there was a team, a woman from the DESI, um, that came in, and she gathered information in order for the department to do a review. So, um, Sean did the civil rights, so he had to upload all this information. This is a lot of time spent in uploading and providing evidence that we're meeting standards. He'll talk a little bit about that. Um, engagement phase, the individual comes in, they do, um, interviews with instructional staff, uh, administrators, principals, they represent the CPAC. They, um, review documents from special education, IEP, civil rights, handbooks. They survey parents. Um, they come in and they go on site. They look through special education binders, looking at timelines, looking at if there was, um, parent involvement in the team meeting, where there's teachers involved, all of that, and then they go around and they do observations. So they do each of that. Then you get a rating, and I'm not gonna read every, you know, thing. So you get commendable, implemented, implementation in progress, partially implemented, not implemented, prior non-compliance corrective action under review, and not applicable. So on the chart, that's a summary of compliance criteria ratings for Belcher Town. So, um, we implemented everything across the board except one SE fifty-one. And this was, in our minds, um, a little deceiving, and we have been reaching out to the state. Somewhere along the line, they changed the certification for a certain grade level teacher. Um, and we can't really find out when they notified districts. So now that when districts are going through the audit, um, we're, we're getting notified. And we, there was a finding that the individual has, um, a certification that states with and without dis, with and without disabilities. Well, that's saying you no longer, that isn't applicable, you need a special education certification. So the individual is working towards that. We have a plan, we're all set. But, um, I talked to other districts, 'cause I was annoyed by this, and they're getting the same finding, which is fifty-one. So it's a certification thing, so just so you know. So the SE fifteen, thirty-two, thirty-five, thirty-six, they're all criterias, and I'll just give you a little example of each one. So SE fifteen is child fine. We have an obligation to do child fine. We think someone has a disability, we have to evaluate. We have to send notices to pediatricians' offices, to early intervention. Anybody thinks there's a disability, contact your local school. SE thirty-two was the parent advisory special ed. We need to have a spe, a special ed advisory. We have that. Assistive technology, we have certain assistive technology in the district, whether that's iPads, or, um, uh, communication boards, whatever it may be, we're good there. Um, implementation, accountability, and financial responsibilities. This is that we're ensuring that the IEP is being implemented to the best, the fullest extent, and that, um, we're doing that. Um, administrator of special education, that we have a licensed administrator. Fifty-one is that our teachers are properly licensed. So this, as you believe, I think it was fifty-one, on that, that's why we got nixed, because they have a early childhood with and without disabilities. They say that's no longer applicable. Get the special education. Um, fifty-two is related service providers, that they may not be DESI trained, DESI certified, but they have to be certified through their organization. Is that up to date? We make sure that we have, um, educational interpreters if we need them. For IEP meetings, professional development, we must provide professional, um, development for students with disabilities. Um, special education classrooms are compared to a regular classroom. They're not all located in one wing of the building. That their timeout rooms are appropriate for DESI regulations. And, um, fifty-six is that we look at our special education programs and evaluate them. How many students are we having in the program? What's the graduation rates when they are in the programs? What's the dropout rate, rate with students with and without disabilities? What's the mass core completion with and without disabilities? So we have to go through all these. Um, sometimes, because this was a mid, kind of a smaller one, there's only a certain number. This could be two or three pages long if we had the full one. It's a lot of time, it's a lot of work. I wanna give Becky kudos. She was short staffed, she got all the information in, and she did a great job at meeting those requirements. So, like I said, we're good on that.
Great, thanks, Brian.
Sean, oh, wait.
And there's more.
Oh, there's more.
Civil rights.
Okay, so we did the civil rights one as well. This one was the full civil rights. The last time we did it, we only had to do a couple of them. Um, the window, window opened, I think, in the spring. We were able to start. But unfortunately, um, we really need a lot of information, or to tap a lot of people to get information from them, um, and, and get some of the documents uploaded. We weren't really able to start, start until the end of summer. I checked some stats, uh, took us about forty-six days with the assistance of more than twenty staff to upload a hundred and thirty-four documents to this, totaling more than a thousand pages of information that someone at DESI then had to read and provide feedback on, which was great because we saw some of the, um, opportunities we had. You may remember updating the handbooks a couple of times, which is some language. There's a policy in here. We had medication restraint, and it's supposed to be medical restraint, like, somebody really went through and, and looked at them. So in a lot of ways, it's really good, because it keeps us in compliance. Um, takes a lot of people, a lot of time, and we're good. So, same thing Brian did. I'll go quickly, in the interest of getting you folks over there to get some new turf. Um, we look at the full range of access educational programs. That means every student has the same access to all programs, uh, specifically targets EL students and special education students, to make sure we're offering, um, everything we can. We have to translate documents for seven, seven A and B have to do with the structured time on learning, nine hundred hours, uh, in the lower elementary, elementary nine ninety at the high school. And then we have to, the principals all have to submit their schedules, and that goes to DESI. Uh, this, number eight, the accessibility of extracurricular activities. We have to, some, things like this are hard to prove that you do, and a lot of what they're looking for is just that the language is written somewhere. So a lot of times, I was just referencing handbook, and our handbook says explicitly, "We do not discriminate, and everyone can participate." Uh, so you don't have to get, like, creative in how you meet it, you just have to say, "Here's our language that says we do," and they say, "Okay." Uh, ten A is the code of conduct. They really only look at the, the high school one they're very interested in. And that has to do, it just has to make sure it says all of these different things about tobacco-free and anti-bullying, and that the code of conduct references all of that. Ten B is our bullying prevention intervention plan. Um, we got dinged on this one a couple of years ago, because we hadn't updated it, uh, in a couple of years, and now we update it every year, so this was, this was good and thorough, and we just updated that not that long ago. Ten C was a bit of a bear. That one is all the new discipline regulations, and so that one actually had a lot of uploads, um, because we had to show examples of all of our paperwork and all the suspensions and, and other things that we were doing. So that one was, we're in full compliance with that one, though, so that's, we do a nice job with that, particularly at the high school. The twelve A is, um, notifications, so that one is about that, like, we put the language on our letterhead. Really, like, so it says that the people we don't discriminate against, um, and that we have to put out all the time that we're non-discrimination. Um, skipping down a little bit to, oh, that seventeen A is where the, um, mechanic, the medication restraint, where we changed that and that from medical restraint, okay. And then a lot of, like, twenty, twenty-one, twenty and twenty-one are our annual trainings that we do every year. People sign off that they, uh, have received the confidentiality, civil rights. There's a special education training, too, that, that folks do, and so we just have to submit that everyone says they, they have done it. Twenty-three does not apply to us, because we don't have a separate facility, but we still met it, so, there you go, for not having that, I guess. And twenty-four and twenty-five are sort of our internal processes. Anytime we adopt curriculum, which you see, anytime someone's using supplemental materials, we have a process for that. Uh, and then every year, we go through our, our data, uh, and try to make decisions, and Brian makes recommendations.
Yeah.
And off we go.
Perfect.
And the last page is the focus standards for special education and, uh, civil rights. So these aren't necessarily uploads, these are when they come in to look. So when they come in to look, they're looking at the files for IEPs, they're looking at least restrictive placement, they're looking at evaluation timelines, parent, um, participation, discipline of students. So although we upload all that information, then they come on site, and they really did that. So I'm gonna tell you, as a former spec director, um, who was in charge of all this, I love that I'm able to share the wealth now. But it's very, um, it's very, um, pleasing, it's very nice to know that when we get this report, we're in compliance, because it takes a lot of work throughout the year to make sure we do this, and that's due to Sean's role and Becky's role, and working as teams with the principals, they have to send us stuff. So I just wanna give a shout out to everybody to, for maintaining those standards, and not having to be put on corrective action plans. So, thank you all.
Well, thank you so much for doing that. Pass that on to Becky.
Yes.
I'm sad she broke her foot and couldn't get our kudos. Any questions from the committee? All right, um, we are not doing the policy readings, because, um, policy didn't meet tonight. Um, so curriculum instruction, Matt, um, we talked about the competency thing. Uh, personal policy didn't meet, property and transportation, finance and budget doesn't meet yet. Mika, I saw you sent us the newsletter for the collaborative. Can we hear about it at our next meeting? 'Cause we just gotta race out of here. Or you wanna tell us real quick?
I wanna tell you real quick, 'cause.
Okay.
That part is just like the annual, the annual, uh, report and the audit that I sent. But, um, just to know that the collaborative is having to make some tough financial decisions right now, um, with, with staffing, um, a lot of organizations that kind of heavily depend on grant money or partnerships with. Others that have grant money are kind of in a similar boat of having to kind of figure out, um, what to do now that the funding is no longer there, or will shortly be no longer there. And so I'm gonna also forward you, um, a communication that was sent out by Todd Doster regarding that.
And he also met with us, the superintendents from Hampshire County, and, um, their, their licensure program, I know, has been bye-bye, and they have to make some calls, so.
Okay. That's sad to hear.
Just real quick, um, we are working on the strategic planning for the next five years. Does anyone wanna be on it as a representative from school committee?
I did it last time, and it was really great.
I feel like Ruby really appreciated that.
Well, I, I feel like I should, someone else should enjoy that, or, it was very great to participate last time.
Think about it, if you, if you just.
I feel like it was daytime meetings, right?
What kind of time commitment?
It's five thirty to eight, once a month. The first meeting is also Thursday, so any, you all wouldn't likely be able to come, 'cause it's the tri-board meeting. Um, we have our meeting scheduled, and then you're always scheduled on top of it. But it's once a month. I'll send it to, I'll include you in all of it anyway, but I will s, this.
So only two of us can be there if those of us wanna go.
Why don't we send you all the dates, and you guys can decide?
And perfect. We used to all bring food, and it was a great spread, so.
Okay.
Putting it out there.
I, I might be interested. All right, um, questions from the media. Lou. Lou's got nothing for us. Um, so we are not going into executive session, so I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn at six forty-eight PM. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye, unanimous, we are out. Let me take all this.